Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, December 5th, 2022. A call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law, to the Constitution, to the republic, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of America, and to the justice for all.
Thank you very much. Under general, there's nothing in the program this evening. However, I will just point out there that the December 12th, Monday, December 12th council meeting does not have an agenda, so we are going to go ahead and cancel that in favor of the Monday 19th agenda. So, no meeting next Monday, December 12th. With that brings up to midi-- excuse me, item number five, committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondents this evening? No committee correspondents. That brings us to item six, public comment. There's one person that is-- Please come forward and address the council. Please keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Upon review of tonight's agenda, I would like to comment on the following. Again, congratulations to Councilor Berman and Councilor Hatch on an unprecedented election turnout. On action item B, to council resource Purdy, as Councilor Johnston and Councilor McVeil have held the deputy mayor's position, I am in hopes that your suggested motion is to elect Councilor Archer as deputy mayor, as he holds the most seniority amongst the five other remaining councilors. On action item C, Mr. Mayor, upon review of your previous council liaison appointments and the critical juncture of a relatively new planning department and planning board, along with the city seeking a new fifth planner in four years, I beseech you to consider your precedent of appointing two councilor liaisons to the planning board, as you have done with the LRPC and Traffic Safety Committee, preferably the experience with historical knowledge of the last three years of ZORs and planning board engagement, be it Councilor Johnston, McVeil, or Councilor Hatch. The city deserves that extra appointment during this critical time of all the development that's going on within the city and the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else from the public that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, moving on to item seven of the agenda, and that is to approve the minutes for November 14th and November 21st. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McVeil. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call on the minutes. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McVeil?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the minutes. Brings us to item eight, the consent items, and this is the item A, the certification of election results for the state general and referendum election and municipal general and referendum election that was held on November 8th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilor McVeil, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? With nobody seeking recognition for discussion, roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McVeil?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the consent agenda. That brings us to action items, and the first up is item A, the swearing in of elected officials. City councilors Mike Berman and Phil Hatch. I'd like to bring forward the city clerk, Michelle Hughes, and Councilor Berman, Councilor Hatch, if you would stand before us in front of Clerk Hughes. She's going to read you the oath. Hopefully you'll recite it.
Do you, Philip Hatch, and Michael Berman, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Maine, and that you'll in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Saco, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city councillor for your respective ward? Congratulations.
That brings us to item nine B, and that is on page four in your packet, and that is the election of the deputy mayor. Councilor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Article 2, Section 2.05, Election and Terms, subsection C of the Charter states, "The city council shall elect from its membership a deputy mayor who shall exercise all powers of the mayor during temporary absence or disability of the mayor. In the event of a vacancy in office of mayor, the deputy mayor shall assume the office of mayor with all the duties and obligations of that office in accordance with the provisions of section 2.06(c)(1). Be it ordered that the city council move to elect Councilor McVeil as deputy mayor of the city of Saco for the term of one year commencing January 2nd, 2023. I move to approve the order."
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Archer. Discussion. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that, of course, I have the utmost respect for Councilor McVeil, and she's done a fine job as deputy mayor. But the reason I asked to speak is simply put, when we revised the charter a couple of years ago, we clarified that the deputy mayor position would be up for election every year, as opposed to one councillor having it essentially for the duration of their term. And the reason we did that was under the understanding that the position would rotate, or at least that the most councillors possible would have a chance to be the deputy mayor, to get the necessary experience, as well as just as the-- it breeds good camaraderie among the councilors to give-- spread that experience around. So, in that respect, I would simply remind the council that there are two councilors, myself and Councilor Purdy, who have equal seniority to Councilor McVeil, and one councillor, Councilor Archer, who has seniority over any other councillor who has not been the deputy yet, and I would ask that the council consider that before this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gunn. Any further discussion on the item at hand? There's a first, there's a second for Councilor McVeil. Okay, with no further discussion, roll call, vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McVeil?
Obstand.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes with 5, 1, and 1. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor McVeil.
Thank you.
With that moves us to action item nine C on page five in your packet, and that is the confirmation of council liaison and appointments to committees. Councilor Purdy?
Thank you. It is the practice of the city council to have council members serve as a liaison with city boards, commissions, and committees. By code, some committees and boards include voting rights. The mayor has made updates to the individuals appointed to these bodies and is seeking council confirmation. The city solicitor has vetted this process of changing appointments. The rules and order of business contain a brief description of these boards, committees, and commissions. Be it ordered that the city council approve the mayor's appointments as detailed in the document titled "Saco City Council Liaison and Appointments to Committees, December 5th, 2022."
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman on confirmation of council liaison and appointments to committees. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McVeil?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item D, a public hearing amendments to the permitted and conditional uses in the PR Portland Road zoning note-- excuse me, Road zoning district on page seven in your packet, assigned to Councilor Gunn. Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planning board members observed that some uses and developments that are currently allowed in the PR zoning district may not achieve the goals that are expressed in the ordinance or were intended by the board and council when the PR district was created. In advance of a more comprehensive planning effort and at the request of the planning board, amendments to the zoning ordinance are proposed for the adoption in the near term to better reflect the goals that were expressed during the recent updates of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. These include changes to the permitted and conditional uses in table 3.3, which is attached, and development of new standards for conditional uses in the PR zoning district. After discussing these amendments during two workshops and two separate public hearings, Saco's planning board voted 4-0 during the November 1st, 2022 meeting, to forward a positive recommendation to city council for adoption of the proposed amendments. Councilors requested additional changes to these amendments during the November 14th meeting. These changes are incorporated in the current draft amendment. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McVeil?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing at 6:42. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the council on amendments to the permitted and conditional uses in the Portland Road zoning district, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Randy Mace. I'm the general manager for Whitehead Peterbilt. We're out at 837 Portland Road. And we recently-- we moved out there in 2016, and we've been operating out there since then. We recently, due to growth in the business, had filed a permit to put an addition onto the building for a couple of more service pays in our service department. In the course of doing that, we found out that, I guess, some zoning changes had been made since we moved out there in 2016, which, quite frankly, weren't -- we weren't aware of. Excuse me. I've only been with the company since 2020, so I went back and did a little bit of homework. And I found, when we were getting ready to move out there in 2016, we initially approached the city. This was a good area for us to be in. We have three other stores in Maine, Presque Isle, Bangor, and Auburn. So it made a lot of sense for us to be down in York County to kind of round out our offerings. And we initially were very interested in buying a lot in one of the industrial parks and building a new facility in it. At that time, my predecessor, I had a chat with him, and he was the one that was involved at the time, was told by the city that the industrial parks were not where a business like ours was permitted to be in Saco. And we were actually pointed to the Portland Road District. And we were able to find a place out there. We leased it for a couple of years, and we purchased it a couple of years ago. So, earlier this year, we filed an application to add on a 6,000-square-foot addition to our service base that we have out there. And the permit was going through its process. We had some folks from the planning board come out, take a look at-- they were concerned, they wanted to check out, make sure the water discharge wasn't going to be significantly more, and that everything was in line to take care of that, which they were satisfied with that. And then we were told that our use isn't a permitted use out there, that we're a non-conforming use in the Portland Road District. It was quite a surprise to us, because in 2016, we were actually directed to that area instead of-- our first interest was somewhere in industrial parks. We wanted to build a brand-new building in industrial parks, and we were told that the zoning in the industrial parks was not suitable for what we did. So, this has created -- this has created a bit of a problem for us. It's already delayed our project several months. We intended to be well along with the addition by now, and we haven't even got the permit yet. And so, I just wanted to take a few minutes, and I certainly appreciate the time that you folks afforded me here tonight. We employ about 25 people out there, roughly. This addition will allow us to employ some more people here in the Saco area. And we're a little bit mystified as to what happened, because we were never notified that the zoning in any way had changed. And when, like I said, when we came here, we were told that was the place that the city really wanted businesses like ours, was in that Portland Road zone. So, still kind of-- I'd like, you know, I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. One is just to tell the story of where we're at, and we really would like, if we could in some way, to expedite the process and get our addition put on, because business is growing. But also, I hope to hear maybe a little bit of the history on what happened between 2016 and-- because I've got-- I found in our files a building code, zoning, and land use regulatory ordinance clearance that is signed by a Mr. Lambert, I believe, city of Saco Code Enforcement Officer, September 20th, 2016. Says, "As required by the Secretary of State, the above-named applicant at the location shown is in compliance with all building codes and land use regulatory ordinances for a dealer license and/or application for additional dealer license plates as they pertain to a commercial building, a display area, and sale and service of vehicles, and the display of a permanently mounted sign." So, that was issued in 2016, and it seems like something's changed, and quite frankly, not-- we became aware of it when the-- when our permit ran into some issues, because now we're being told it's a non-conforming use. So, with that said, we certainly would like to continue with the project. We'd like to get it built and hire a few more people out there and do more business here in the city of Saco. But with all that said, I'll sit back down and I'll listen to some discussion about the motion that's before the council here tonight, and see maybe how we get to this point from here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's anyone else who would like to speak regarding the amendments to the permitted and conditional uses in the Portland Road zoning district, please come forward and be heard.
Hello again. Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I had mentioned on this about on page 16 of this particular packet is the multifamily, the three-to-eight, and the also the multi-unit residential projects. In the packet, I would hope that you will consider it next week to be, as it is written, conditional, conditional, blank, and not permitted, 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 as the revision has stated. Until the LRPC, which came into being-- into the making in 1214, 2020, and then the appointed-- the appointees about four, five, six months later, we don't have a robust smart growth action plan ready. We have subsequent amendments that are Mikeyon's and Bob Hamlin's of spring of 2020 that have not been addressed. We have sign language and other language that is in the code that was removed. We don't know why. I think it was just a clerical error when the codification was happening, but there's a lot of issues that some of the experienced council liaisons are aware of and have dealt with. We need to have all those items done before we can consider certain amendments to this PR zone. And in relation to this previous speaker, he came in right before the 2017, 2018, 2019, and then the ZORs, which then got discombobulated. So there's a lot of business that is unfinished. We need to roll up our sleeves, get that language done, before we get into more issues like this previous speaker. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If there are any other speakers, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mikey Yon, and I've been on the economic development commission for a good long time, and following a lot of this stuff, listening to this gentleman here. Wasn't going to say anything tonight. I just came to listen. And I think in general everything seems to be okay. Listening to Kelly talk about-- I had mentioned it back a few meetings ago, as far as-- I'm looking at everything else we've ever done and any of the projects I've ever done in multifamily in Saco, and I've done a few with Canterbury West and Stonegate and all of those condominiums. They've always been conditional uses. Not a big extra hump to go. It's just a couple of the little pieces in there. And so, to arbitrarily go PPP when it's not a big hoop, when we now are with the head planters gone and there's going to be quite a transition, you know, I think, you know, I'm not sure how busy the market's going to be in the distant future here and in the near future, but if I had one choice, I'd say I don't see the problem with that staying conditional, those uses versus permitted, and then it would be consistent with the medium residential denser. You know, I can see downtown and some of the other things, because you really want that there. But out there, we're still-- we're still playing with the thing that Bob and I had worked on real hard a couple of years ago with municipal services like Scarborough and Bitterford has, with the make sure that we don't get caught shot on whether it's police fire or schools. And I think when the land, the long-term planting commission gets back together at some point in the future, that hopefully that'll be something that we'll get on to. So, having said that, other than that, I think a lot of the changes that Jason had come up with, you guys are agreeing to, are very positive for what's going on out there. And so, I'm just here to listen for this part of it, and then you'll probably see me fade away right after this. Thanks for your time. Bye.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Gunn?
Thank you. I move to close the public hearing and schedule the final reading for December 19th, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just get clarification on that first business is, what is their current use? I know they're on PR Road. I know the zone. I'm just, what is their current use?
City Administrator Kenrith, can we get a clarification on what their current use is?
Perhaps our Assistant City Planner, Shannon Chisholm, might have a response?
Hello, everybody. So, the current use, I'm going to bring up the ordinance currently just to make sure that I say it 100% right, but it is a heavy vehicle use. So let me see if I can find it. It's considered to be a large vehicle sale use, and that was a use that was added to the zoning ordinance a year or two ago. Exact date unknown by me.
So in 2016, obviously you weren't here during that time. In 2016, you can't say what the current use was when this was offered.
It was defined differently. It was defined differently. What occurred, again, as I stated several weeks ago--
Councilor Johnston?
--was, I'm giving the history.
Yeah. Next time, please ask for-- because actually-- Yeah, next time, please ask for, uh, cause actually Councilor Archer still has the floor.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Again, what occurred was back in, during the ZORS process and subsequently right thereafter, we needed to create, and I say we, it should be city staff needed to create a definition for one person, or one business that ultimately occupied the EPW site. That definition was concrafted so specifically that it has now put other businesses that had a different use into that use. And so, as I stated several weeks ago, that's the problem with when we take this look at zoning and we don't take the big picture as to how we're applying things. So I think, as I've stated, I certainly understand, you know, the, the speaker's issue and I'd like to find a way to support them because I don't really see an issue with that location having it, but this all falls back to that same issue of the Portland Road being too large of a zone, because as we've stated, and I think other councillors agree, we don't necessarily want this stated use through the entirety of that zone. So here we are with this conundrum and I've really not figured out the best solution. But again, I, I do wanna to work with the Peterbilt facility. I, I, as I stated before, I saw that as an issue two years ago. How, how do these uses continue on now that we've redefined them? So I'm, I don't know. I mean, obviously we're here two weeks to make a final decision, but where I sit today, I'm really, uh, at the point of maybe just postponing this indefinitely until council can have a in-depth conversation on the future of this Portland Road Zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Councilor Purdy?
Yeah, that we, we definitely got some work to do on the Portland Road Zone and that was part of our discussion with the planning board a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but to this gentleman's specific case, um, I think part of what's been attempted here is to fix some obvious oversights that, that occurred during the ZORS process. Obviously, your business got, your type of business got eliminated from the, from the zone, which really shouldn't have been since it already existed. So, um, like I said, I think some of the, uh, some of this is an attempt to fix some of the oversights from the ZORS process.
Any further discussion, Councilor Hatch?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Doyle. Uh, Shannon, um, I'm looking at the proposed chart in the packet on page 13. And would, would this business that we're questioning, would it fall into the large commercial vehicle sales and service category?
It would.
Okay. And I'm seeing a proposal for conditional use in the PR zone as a proposal. And if we were successful approving the chart with that conditional use in it, would it resolve the issue?
It would, but it would also require, uh, Why Did Saco LLC to go to the planning board for approval of the project. The way, once, uh, the large commercial vehicle sales and service, uh, use was added to the, um, permitted uses, um, that's, it basically just fit Why Did Saco better? Therefore, its previous use was done away with and replaced with this use. Um, but under the previous use that it had, it, this project would have been considered to be a minor site plan. Uh, and it wouldn't have gone to the planning board, it would have been something staff could have approved. So it would require, um, a conditional use application to be submitted to, uh, the planning department and then for this project to be brought before the planning board.
And if need be, could a process like that be, uh, expedited?
Oh, so at least for this project, uh, I was the one who did the review and it was basically done and ready to be, um, issued when the issue of use came up. Uh, so this could be ready to go to, um, well, it wouldn't be ready in January because it takes, um, I believe, two months for zoning amendments to become law. But as soon as this zoning amendment became the law of the land, I'd be able to get it there that month.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Councilor Purdy?
Uh, just in light, what the Assistant City Planner said is if we were to pass this after it goes through, when it goes through the process or, you know, with any minor changes that may need to be made, uh, can we make it effective any sooner? Or do we have to wait the full two months before it comes?
I don't believe you can make it any sooner. I think you can set a date beyond a, a certain point, but you can't reduce the minimum amount date that it needs to sit and wait.
Thank you.
Councilor McPhail?
Thank you. I've been struggling over the last couple of weeks with this and putting out the option of possibly tabling it, but then we do want certain things in there. Is it worth it to table it, hold off? And this is one of the perfect examples. And again, willing to work with you, you've been a good business, um, we respect it. And, but that is one of the business types that we are looking at, going back to the node issue or looking, or at least splitting the Portland Road. And I'm, again, with Councilor Johnston, I've gone over, how do we put those into amendments? How can we, on the 19th, look at this and say, it's one thing to say, oh, we don't want this in or that added, but how do we split the district, especially for a situation like this? Commercial sales for that large vehicle is, yeah, it has a place, but it's not the entire stretch. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss as to how we can take this going forward, getting some approvals in, but then waiting for our, the potential workshop that we're hoping to have in January with the planning board for new discussions. If anybody has any suggestions, I'm not.
Counsel can always order the planning board to look at an amendment that it brings forward. So if you want to amend the Portland Road Zone to create a Portland Road North, Portland Road South District, uh, and have the two not so interchangeable with all the uses, you can make that amendment and we'll bring it through the process and then you send it to the planning board. They go through their process, they come back with a recommendation for you to review. That's, that's the process outlined by the, the charter and the code. So that's the process to, to fix that. If that's something you're interested in doing and that's just simply getting an email to Brian and then to the planner, uh, and then we can, that process can begin. But remember, how we got here was a 2017 zoning ordinance revision commission set up by the previous administration. And then a two-year, two-year zoning ordinance revision process that included approximately 21 public hearings to get to where we are today, to replace a 40-year-old document. Anytime you replace a document like that, there are going to be things that fall through the cracks. You, you are not able to put out a perfect document. Nobody can do that. So that is the reason why amendments are out there in the first place, is when you've made a mistake or missed something, you amend it to fix it. And that is the process that, that you all can do as council. Councilor Berman?
If I understand the process correctly, uh, on the 19th, we could pass some or all of these changes. They wouldn't occur or, or going to affect for another 60 days if during that period we found that some of these uses, uh, for example, large vehicle sales and service, uh, we wanted to make conditional uses but not allow new ones, we could then put a moratorium into place following our, our three-meeting process to prohibit additional, uh, businesses of that nature until such time as we could amend the zoning ordinance even further. That would also give the planning board some time to work on amendments such as splitting a zone into two different parts and working on other things, uh, if we need to do so, allowing our current user to do what they need to do, but prohibit additional businesses from popping up if we didn't think this was the right zone for them.
Councilor Berman, you may be able to do that without a moratorium. As the planner said in the last discussion back on, uh, November 21st, I believe, uh, the planner said that you could limit the number of the business specifically in a place. So if you wanted to amend, uh, large-scale, pardon.
Large vehicle sales and service, Mr. Mayor.
Apologies. Uh, large commercial vehicle, if you want to limit that to two locations and that's what's up there now, then that's what you get. And again, you can do that through the amendment process and you don't need to do a moratorium.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments, concerns? Councilor Hatch?
Uh, just a, a final comment. I, I, I just would like you to know that we will try to do our best to, uh, with the power that we have and the tools, that the tools that we have, so.
Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at 7:06 to close the public hearing and set final reading for the 19th and we'll take a five-minute recess at this time, five-minute recess. Greetings and welcome back. Uh, up next is the item E, a public hearing amendments to public notice and review procedures of Saco's subdivision site plan and zoning ordinance, page 31 in your packet, assigned to Councilor Purdy. Councilor Purdy?
Thank you. Members of the public regularly express concerns about the public notice procedures for planning board review of development permit projects. Planning staff administer procedures and timelines that are established in state statutes and local ordinance, which may be inadequate, inadequate because, one, technological and cultural shifts limit the types of information people obtain from newspapers, rendering the related publication requirements outdated and ineffective. Postal delivery of paper notices may be delayed or the addressing information available to staff may be incorrect. Three, the, the radius used for mailings may exclude persons who wish to be informed of an application and related hearings. Four, the requirements differ between application types, causing confusion for staff and members of the public who are notified for one application type but not another. And five, requirements may be missing from Saco's revised ordinances. Further, recent events illuminated a potential conflict between review timeline requirements for determining completeness of subdivision applications, 30-day maximum, and scheduling planning board review sub, subdivisions, 28-day minimum. The proposed amendments will make the public notice procedures consistent for all applicable application types. We'll increase the minimum timelines for mailed notices and we'll add onsite signage requirement for certain applications to help inform interested parties who may not receive formal notices. They will also correct the review timeline issues in Saco's subdivision ordinance. After discussing these amendments during two workshops and a public hearing, Saco's planning board voted four-zero during the October 18, 22 meeting to forward a positive recommendation to city council for the proposed amendments. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open the public hearing, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing at 7:13 PM. There's members of the public who would like to address the council on this item, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Purdy?
I move to close the public hearing and schedule a final reading for December 19th, 2022.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on closing the public hearing, setting final reading for the 19th? No discussion, roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at 7:14 PM. That brings us to item F, a public hearing and new application for special entertainment permit boomers, on page 46 in your packet, assigned to Councilor Johnston. Councilor Johnston?
Sausage and Meatballs LLC, doing business as Boomers, has applied for a new special entertainment permit. Permit would be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and the clerk has properly advertised public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, subsection 93 dash two. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any, to open the public hearing, any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing at 7:15 PM. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. Members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by Sausage and Meatballs LLC doing business as Boomers for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This permit is incomplete. It doesn't state the date it expires. Can we get that updated before we vote on it? This permit expires blank twenty blank unless revoked. That needs to be completed.
City Clerk Hughes?
It's a new license, so the state hasn't actually approved their liquor license yet. They're working on it, so they don't have a date as of yet.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any further discussion on this item? Roll call to close the public hearing and grant the license. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero at seven sixteen PM. That brings us to item G, a public hearing, a renewal application for a special entertainment permit for Townhouse Pub on page forty-eight in the packet, assigned to Counselor Johnston. Counselor Johnston?
Townhouse Management Incorporated doing business as Townhouse Pub has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit would be concurrent with establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter ninety-three, Entertainment, Section ninety-three dash two. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Hatch, any discussion on opening the public hearing for Townhouse Pub renewal application? With nobody seeking recognition, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero to open the public hearing at seven seventeen. Members of the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Townhouse Management Incorporated doing business as Townhouse Pub for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? With nobody seeking recognition for discussion, roll call vote to close the public hearing and order renewal of the liquor license. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero at seven eighteen. Item H is a first reading, Chapter eighty-one, request to purchase city-owned property, twenty-four Lincoln Road, on page fifty in your packet, assigned to Counselor Purdy.
Garrett Harmon, owner of the property located at forty-one Lincoln Road, lot thirty-seven dash one of Tax Map one oh one, submitted a request for the planning board and city council to consider selling the neighboring parcel to the southwest, twenty-four Lincoln Road, lot thirty-five of Tax Map one oh one, to him so he can preserve the open space abutting his property. The planning board found that the subject property lacks potential for public uses and voted five-zero to forward a positive recommendation to the city council during their November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Section eighty-one dash, eighty-one dash two C of Saco City Code states that the council shall determine the method of sale if the council decides to offer any city-owned property for sale. Regardless of the method of sale, notice shall be sent to all the butters. Saco's assessor believes that the property was acquired by the city in the late seventies or early eighties because of the failure of the previous owners to pay property taxes. Section eighty-one dash two D of Saco City Code states that the proceeds from the sale of tax-acquired properties shall be applied to the balance of the unpaid taxes and any unpaid fees, interest, and lien fees for the property. Any additional funds received will be deposited as directed by the city council. I move to approve the first reading of Chapter eighty-one, request to purchase city-owned property, twenty-four Lincoln Road, and to schedule a public hearing for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion's been made by Counsel Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. With that brings us to item I on page sixty-one in the packet, one reading to establish escrow amounts for zoning amendments. Counselor Hatch?
Finance has worked with planning to improve the process for establishing and collecting fees under Chapter eighty-three cost recovery. One issue the departments identified was that although Chapter eighty-three mandates had the positive funds for cost recovery, it does not state an amount. This amendment to the fee schedule establishes transparent and consistent escrow amounts for zoning, application, and appeal activity covered by Chapter eighty-three. Be it ordered that the council approve the proposed amendments to the city of Saco fee schedule, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counsel Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on establishing escrow amounts for zoning amendments? With nobody seeking recognition for discussion, a roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Brings us to item J, one reading, petition for city acceptance of a new public street, Apple Tree Lane, page sixty-three in your packet, assigned to Counsel Purdy.
Kerry Siemens of CBS Foundation's LLC requests city acceptance of a new public street, Apple Tree Lane, in accordance with Section nine-one-one of Saco's subdivision ordinance and Chapter one-eighty-six of Saco City Code, city acceptance of improvements. This street was approved as part of the Apple Tree Lane subdivision in two thousand and sixteen. The project included four residential lots on the new street and one residential lot along Flock Pond Road. Per the recorded subdivision plan, city attorney Tim Murphy and city engineer Joe LaBarriere determined the project to be complete and found the as-built plan, the meets-and-bounds description, and the deed of session to be accurate and acceptable. The planning board voted four-zero to forward a positive recommendation to the city council during their November first meeting. I move to accept Apple Tree Lane as a public city street.
Motion's been made by Counsel Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on accepting a new public street, Apple Tree Lane? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Kind of are what they are. They current, or they meet the current standards in the policy we have for acceptance, but, you know, several weeks back, there was a series of different streets we were looking at accepting. Counselor Archer brought up comments I had previously made about street acceptance, and these two streets are perfect examples as to streets that I personally don't believe there's much benefit to the city of Saco accepting. They service four to five lots. They're not through streets. It's highly unlikely they ever will be through streets. There's plenty other examples around this community that I could show you that were accepted this way, and even though they left potential access in the future to developments, subsequent developers decided not to connect those streets. So we end up with these, what, I mean, to me, they're a private road. Most of us will never drive down these roads. They're just servicing those properties. So again, like I said, it does meet the standard, but it's a standard, I think, as I've stated for many years, we should reconsider. This benefits nobody but the developer. It should have been a private road. So that's what I got to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes five-one. That brings us to one reading, a petition for city acceptance of new public street, Eloise Way, and that is on page ninety-two in your packet and assigned to Counsel Purdy. Counsel Purdy?
Thank you. Kerry Siemens of CBS Foundation LLC requests city acceptance of a new public street, Eloise's Way, in accordance with Section nine-one-one of Saco subdivision ordinances and Chapter one-eighty-six of Saco City Code, city acceptance of improvements. This street was approved as part of the Eloise's Place subdivision in two thousand and nineteen. The project included four residential lots on the new street and one existing residential lot along Lincoln Road, per the recorded subdivision plan. City attorney Tim Murphy and city engineer Joe LaBarriere determined the project to be complete and found the as-built plan, the meets-and-bounds description, and the deed of session to be accurate and acceptable. The planning board voted four-zero to forward a positive recommendation to the city council during their November first meeting. I move to accept Eloise's Way as a public city street.
Motion's been made by Counsel Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
I guess I could just say ditto for this one, but I guess the question I would have, and I guess I'll ask this directly to the DPW director, but to my knowledge, the city hasn't done any recent study into cost analysis on what the acceptance of roads actually adds to the city's budget. By my count, during my tenure on council, we added somewhere between twenty and thirty roads without adding any DPW staff. But I would assume, given that we've already accepted at least five in the last few weeks, we're probably nearing that point. So I am interested in what that, again, adding roads does to the overall city or the DPW budget. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Kenrath, have, as the departments have started, I'm sure, start looking at budget for next season. Have there, has there been any discussion about the addition of streets and the need for plowing those and maintaining those streets with the Public Works Director?
Yeah, none that I've had thus far, but I'm sure we'll have that conversation as we get into the budget request for next year. And of course, the Public Works Director is going to request the resources he needs to plow all the streets and conduct all of his operations. So, but we can, we can talk to Director Fox and get his, his general opinion beforehand and get it back to you. But I assume Director Fox already took a look at, and Joe LaBarriere in DPW took a look at this and already took that into consideration.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnston, I'm sorry. Did that answer your question? Any further questions? Counsel Archer?
Just more of a, for, again, I approved the last one. I intend to do it with this one, but I think we need to, give me a second, I forgot the chapter. But I'd like to look at Article two, street acceptances, and how we do it for the future. Again, we've set a standard, and I will honor that standard with, again, voting on this one, but maybe amendments or rules on how we look at these for future. We have some significant growth in the future coming, which means there'll be significant streets being developed. And again, there's no benefit to the citizens for a road that only has four housing, and we should talk about how that should look like in the future. But again, I'm going to vote yes because that is the standard of today.
Thank you.
And it's one eighty-four. Sorry.
Counselor Berman?
Just a little concerned about this conversation around no benefit of new public roads. Of course, new development, especially of the right kind, brings in additional residence and additional property tax revenue, which can serve as a benefit to the community, and as part of that, we can take care of the roads.
My apologies. You went a little quick there. Any further discussion on this? Roll call vote on this item, item K. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. That brings us to item ten, new business, on page one-seventeen. Item A is a petition for city acceptance of new public street, Samuel Marshall Drive. Assistant Planner Chisholm?
Hello again. So this city street, it was designed by Aaron Shields of Design Build Associates of Maine, Inc. And unlike the other two streets that we previously talked about, there is one item yet to be resolved on the punch list for Samuel Marshall Drive, and that would be the installation of the granite monumentation. Currently, the developer has put in the property pins along the public way in accordance with the subdivision regulations, but due to supply chain issues, has not been able to obtain granite monuments for this road. An agreement has been worked out if this street is accepted between DPW and the developer, in which the applicant will establish an escrow in the amount of five thousand dollars to be kept by the city until installation of the final granite monuments in the spring of twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, sorry. As I said, the Department of Public Works and the city engineer are amenable to this solution, and the planning board voted five to zero to forward a positive recommendation to city council during their November fifteenth meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Assistant Planner Chisholm? Counsel Archer?
Less of a question, but since this is a one-reading process, why don't we just wait till it's actually done and then just knock it out then?
So the reason being is that the street is basically done minus the monumentation, and the developer would want the city to take over responsibility for the street for plowing purposes this winter. There, it is unlikely that the granite monumentation will arrive in time for the street to be given over to the city this wintertime.
Any? Any further discussion on this item? Is counsel amenable with the solution that's been worked out? I understand, I'm sure counselors that have sat on this board for a while can remember areas where we ran into some similar situations where there was a punch card not finished, and it took a long time to get finished. But in this situation, the solution is the developer's actually putting money down for the granite that the city will then hold on to until the project is finished. So with that, Counsel Archer, did you have something else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is five thousand going to cover the total cost, recognizing construction and materials may go up? Where I'm more amenable is if we cover the hundred percent of the project in escrow, plus maybe twenty-five percent to recognize market changes, then I'm more amenable.
Understood. Counselor Berman?
I was actually just going to make a similar point. It's not clear in the email chain where the five thousand dollar number came from. It was suggested by the Department of Public Works, but how they came to it isn't clear. And I was hoping it would cost or cover the cost of construction if needed.
Assistant Planner Chisholm, was there any, can you shed any light as to how this five thousand dollar number came to be?
I can attempt to. From my understanding of the workings of DPW is that they very rarely ask for more than five thousand in escrow for many situations. So this is kind of like the top that they generally ask for. I cannot speak to how much money it would actually cost to install granite monumentation. But I would say, from my work with the city engineer, if he believes that it is enough, I would defer to his expertise.
Thank you. Thank you. So counsel, do we want to bring this forward, or do we want to wait, or do we want to have the city administrator and appropriate staff go back with an alternative? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up question. Aside from the plowing issue, is there any other outstanding issue related to the development that the developer would want for us to approve this now, or is it simply just the plowing? In your judgment?
In my judgment, I believe it's mostly the plowing, and I don't want to speak for this project because I cannot remember if my statement applies to this project, but there are some city streets that were either going to be accepted by the city during the wintertime or turned over to the property owners to manage themselves. Not sure if this is one of those streets, but it may not be the developers' issue to make sure that this street gets plowed. If it's not accepted, it may be the residents that are on the hook for it.
Counselor Johnston?
I would just add, that's part of the problem with all these, is that most of these developers force these property owners to form the HOA so that they can push the road costs into it if it's not accepted by the city, because as I've stated before, there is no requirement by the city council to accept any road, and I think a lot of people think, or they assume there is, and I think for the most part, councils have, but there have been instances throughout the years that they haven't. So, yeah, it's another catch twenty-two, where you kind of force it on the poor property owners that had no idea they were going to get saddled with it. Thank you.
Counselor Archer?
And this is the reason why I want to at least capture the full cost. If we're doing this to save the developer some cash, well, then we're going to secure it first. Again, the developer fixes it, then we release the full amount. So that's why I'm saying I'm more amenable to covering the complete cost, capturing the complete cost in an escrow account, and recognizing that there could be construction increases, having that, putting that responsibility on the developer to get it done. It will then not put that responsibility on the landowners. It just is to help secure the project getting completed. It's almost as in we're expediting this request to save the developer money so that they don't have to pay for the cost of plowing. And if that's the trade-off, well, I want to make sure that we secure enough funding because we have been burnt before, and I'm, that's what I'm protecting. I'm protecting the city's interest. Again, it's not our money. The developer gets it back. If it's, we take a hundred and twenty-five percent of perceived cost, and it turns out to be only ninety percent done correctly, well, they get all their money back. So that's why I'm more, that will make me more amenable, or we just wait till the spring.
So if there's, if there's no objection, is there any, excuse me, is there any objection to bringing this back on the nineteenth as new business with some answers to the questions that have been posed tonight to Assistant Planner Chisholm, and maybe some follow-up with the Planning Department, city administration, as to what the developer is willing to put in to escrow to hold to satisfy the requests of Counselor Berman and Counselor Archer? If there's no objection, then that's what we'll do. And I hear no objection, counsel, excuse me, city administrator Kainrath?
If I could just ask, please email your questions, your specific questions, to me, and I'll consult with the Planning Department, and we will get everything answered.
So again, counselors, the questions you have on this item, please forward to city administrator Kainrath regarding Samuel Marshall Drive. Assistant Planner Chisholm, thank you very much. And you'll see this item again under new business on the nineteenth. That brings us to Item eleven, administrative updates. City Administrator Kainrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick updates. First, our Water Resource Recovery Department facility upgrade, a staff committee met this week. Today, actually, interviewed two different construction firms. We will have a scoring matrix obviously being used in the process. I think the response to our RFP we put out has been good, and we received the responses we were anticipating. So the committee will meet again later this month to talk further about what we saw in the interviews today, and will bring forward a recommendation. I'll keep you updated as we go along in the process. A couple of quick staff updates. As you know, city planner Jason Garnum is departing, but has the ability to stay on in a consultant capacity until we have a new city planner seated. So he'll be giving us at least a few hours a week, working on some of the larger projects to keep things moving in the interim time period until we have a new city planner seated, and we will be beginning the interview process shortly. We have some good candidates to look at. Congratulations to Brooke Kaba in our assessing office, who recently passed her certified main assessing certification exam. This was a big deal for Brooke, so congrats to her. And we now have three CMA certified staff members in our office, which is the first time we've ever had that. So congratulations to our assessing department, some great work there. Also, in our HR department, congratulations to Carolyn Civic, who recently passed her SHRM, or Society of Human Resource Manager Certification. This is again a difficult certification process for those in the HR world, so congrats to Carolyn and her achievements, and as you all know, that department is doing great things and moving leaps and bounds. So thank you to them. Lastly, just a quick reminder, we still have the RFP opportunity with the fire department for the gear extractor due at one P.M. on December seventh, and I'll just echo what the mayor said under general. Just remember, our next meeting is on twelve nineteen, scratch next Monday. Thank you.
Any questions for city administrator Kainrath? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. City Administrator Kainrath, I was just wondering if we might, in specific addressing the issue in action item D during the public hearing and the property owner at the Peterbilt, if we, if we could get staff to research whether or not there's a grandfathering capability here, given the fact that that property was sort of approved under the old ordinance and the capability was there. It's just, I think, an area where if, if in fact it is grandfathered, then we can expedite the process. If it isn't, it isn't, but I think it'd be worth trying to explore that option if you don't mind.
Certainly. We'll seek more information. Absolutely.
Any further questions for city administrator Kainrath? Moving on to Item twelve, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? No council discussion and comment. Moving on to Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on adjourning? Roll call to adjourn. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adjourn at seven forty-three. Have a great evening, everyone.